I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could have a roll call, please.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Good afternoon.
Miranda. Carlson. Vera.
All right, we are on item number eight. Who would like to begin?
Good afternoon, Council Mike Chuck and Contract Administration Department. Here to talk about Contract Administration's bid and RFQ process as well as construction cost estimates and how they're derived, and also how Contract Administration works with the Equal Business Opportunity Office for helping them develop the subcontracting goal. So before Contract Administration puts a contract out for bid, we have a construction cost estimate. This construction cost estimate comes from multiple sources. This can come from a design consultant that was hired by the city to provide that design. It could come from a design-build team that is under a GMP to do that. It also comes from city engineers from the utility departments, the water, wastewater, transportation, stormwater departments. So when we get the construction cost estimate, a lot of items on there that is broken down into subcontracting tasks in there, so subcontracting items on there. Once we, and this is done on what's called a project task worksheet. This project task worksheet, after all the subcontracting items are noted, is submitted up to the Equal Business Opportunity Office. So from there, this is where Greg Hart and his team look at this, and they match those subcontracting opportunities identified with small, local, women and minority businesses that are certified with the city. And if there are two or more firms that are capable of doing that subcontracting work, then that becomes part of the goal setting. So Greg and his team go through the entire project task worksheet and identify all the subcontract tasks, and they will establish the goal. So that'll be a goal set, and with that, he provides that to the Contract Administration Department along with the contact list of all the firms that were identified to do that work. So when Contract Administration gets this, this becomes part of the bid package that goes out, that's advertised. And as part of the instruction to bidders, any prospective bidders are required to solicit each and every firm identified on that contact list. So as such, they're also required to provide all documentation of their outreach, so it's emails, faxes, phone calls, whatever they did, that's part of their bid package that's going to be submitted. So bid opening day, Contract Administration opens these bids. We get the apparent low bidder, we take that bid package, we submit that up to Greg and his team. And they will take a look at this to make a determination, and they'll make one of three determinations. One is that that contractor met the goal, the contractor made good faith effort to reach the goal, or three, they did not meet the goal and did not make sufficient good faith effort. So Contract Administration does not move on this until we receive a determination memo from Greg with one of those determinations. If that determination was that they met the goal, or that they made good faith effort, then Contract Administration gets that memo when we move forward with the award process, goes into sire, gets on the agenda, and comes before City Council for approval. Now, if that was the third option, that they did not meet the goal and did not make good faith effort, then that contractor will be determined non-responsive due to non-compliance with the Equal Business Opportunity Program. And as such, Contract Administration will then take the apparent second-low bidder, submit that bid package up to Greg, where they again start that review process. So that's bid process in general. RFQ process, similar, but there are a few differences. Differences are that this contracting team is already selected. They're selected through Florida Statute 287.055, the Consultant Competitive Negotiations Act, CCNA. The mayor makes that selection, they're under agreement to provide the city guaranteed maximum price. Now, we will get a construction cost estimate when the contractor reaches the 60% design milestone, and at that point, we start that process over again with the breaking it down into subcontracting items on a project task worksheet. This project task worksheet is again submitted up to Greg and his team, where they match that up with city-certified firms. The goal is established, as well as the contact list is provided to that design-build contractor, and the same situation is that they are required to solicit each and every one of those on that list. So that's the bid RFQ process in general, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilman.
I guess what I'm looking at, I always hear the word "good faith." As you've seen, myself and Mr. Dingfelder have been talking about that, and we recently sent some stuff back, asking for higher numbers. So I'm just looking at, if we're doing an RFP, who's actually writing these RFPs? Who's actually looking to make sure that, I heard you say it goes to Mr. Hart finally, but I guess my mind is saying, well, if it's going to Mr. Hart, and we're looking at these WMBs, but the number is still low, they have a problem, because I'm looking at the dollar amount, but we have this low number with this high dollar amount for work. So I'm just trying to figure out, what I've been seeing with some of these RFPs, once I go to read a few of them, and look at the scope of work, is how we're writing the RFP. And it seems like the way we're writing it, sometimes it's excluding people from being a part of the process. So I don't know if there's a, is there a whole team that is reviewing the RFP or the RFQ, or is there just one or two people that write it, and it just goes to one person to look at, we met the scope? Or is there a committee or body actually looks at the RFP that makes sure all the goals are actually being met, and question when those goals aren't met?
The RFQs that we write, they are written pretty general in nature, so there's not detailed scope involved. And also, a company fits a design-build contract that has a design criteria package, goes into a little bit more detail of the scope, but it's a generalized scope, it's not detailed. That is what we put out, because this is a qualification-based selection, so they are basing that on similar-type work that they've done in the past, and that's what that selection is based on. So there is no detail. The details will be developed after they are selected, and when they're developing the GMP.
For the RFQ, with the RFP.
We do not do RFPs, and that's a purchasing, Contract Administration does RFQs, qualification-based.
Somebody for the answer to those kind of questions, I think that's a big concern for me, is how the RFP is being written for the scope of work. And then it seems like we've got the RFP being written, the scope of work, but it's meeting outside to where others can't be able to bid, and only if same bidders are bidding all the time on certain work, and getting the jobs versus these other folks always being left out. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. How are these other folks left out? I've met with some prime minority businesses in reference to contracts that have never got business with the city, but yet they've met and have all the qualifications, but still have not got work. So I'm just wondering, again, it's the RFP, and I still believe it's how the RFP is being written, or who's getting work. Can you elaborate? You said purchasing, only one can elaborate, correct?
Well, we do not do RFPs.
Maybe Mr. Hart can elaborate, because you read the RFP, sir, or don't you go over?
Gregory Hart, Equal Business Opportunity, Small Business Development. I can touch a little bit on that process. I think Mike did a pretty good job with the high-level overview. The Equal Business Opportunity Office does not engage in the actual composing or writing of either the RFP or an RFQ, which contain the specifications, meaning, of course, as you know, exactly what is the work that is desired to be prosecuted. We don't involve ourselves in that. That comes from the user departments and the subject matter experts. One thing I think that got overlooked in terms of the process is when an RFP comes in, or an RFQ through the Contract Administration Department, there is a technical review team that is comprised of five or six city subject matter experts, as well as a representative from my office. I am required to assign a program analyst to that technical review committee. Some of Mike's folks, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they're looking at some of the engineering technical aspects of the RFQ, whereas my representative is going to hone in on what their minority, small business participation plan addressed in the RFQ. And there is an evaluation point process, weighted values, that are assigned to that RFQ, of which 20 of those points out of 100 are reserved for the evaluation of that proposer's plan for including minority women, small businesses. And so our role is to assign anywhere from zero points to 20, depending upon the substance of their proposal that addresses the inclusion of small minority businesses. And I might say as well, I'm sorry, the end of that review process, as Mike alluded to, the technical review committee steps, once complete, will allow the selection committee per state statute to shortlist firms based on the outcome of the numerical grading. And once shortlisted, there is a selection committee that convenes and entertains a presentation by the shortlisted firms, at the end of which a recommendation is forwarded to the mayor for the final and absolute determination of award or contract. Was that it?
Any other questions, sir? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anything further?
That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we go to this walk-on item, and we have the Planning Commission here, I believe.
Yes, good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. We have some handouts of the slides. Mr. Snelling had asked us to come over and share with you all some information that we've been talking with the Board of County Commissioners about, and some workshops with them, in preparation for what I believe a joint meeting you're going to be having with them on this topic in March on the 25th. So some of you who are on the MPO may have seen some of this information before. But we produce every five years population and employment projections and allocations of where that growth will go throughout our community based on our adopted comprehensive plans. These population projections are a tool that is used for planning purposes, they're not something that is ever adopted. But to give you a little background and the process that we use, we update these, as I said, every five years, so now we're looking out to the year 2045. As part of our process, we look at what are the demographic trends, the real estate market trends, to understand where growth is going within our community. And in this case, we looked at three scenarios of how growth could progress in the future, and we got input from all four local governments and the community through our community-wide survey, and ultimately developed a hybrid allocation that is used to inform our planning. State law does speak to us utilizing the, thank you, David. The Bureau of Economic and Business Research creates population projections, and they speak to our comprehensive plans utilizing those projections and planning for at least a 10-year planning horizon. And the projections are then used to understand where and how the city might grow, how we might plan for things like transportation facilities, school facilities, other forms of infrastructure. The five-year cycle in which we update these coincides with the MPO's long-range transportation plan, because they utilize this as an input into their transportation modeling. So countywide, the Bureau of Economic and Business Research's projection for Hillsborough County is to be at just over 2 million people by the year 2045.
Just to, sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
We're going to lose our forum in about 10 minutes.
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast. How about that?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, sure thing. Okay, and what that means is that Hillsborough County has been adding about 23,000 people on average each year. The city of Tampa has been adding just over 6,000 people on average each year, but you can see that just in the last year, between 2018 and 2019, that jumped up a good bit to over 11,000. So we're seeing a lot of growth recently, and I know you hear from your constituents about that. We looked, as I said, at a number of different trends. Some of them are how we have been developing. Here is, on average, what the comprehensive plan allows as allowable densities, and then, on average, what each of the jurisdictions have been developing at. So we're not building, on average, at the maximum the comprehensive plan allows. Similarly, we're not building at the maximums that the florey ratios allowed in the comprehensive plan permit either. Certainly, there are certain areas where we are hitting those targets, but on average, we're not. In terms of where residential growth is happening, this map shows the areas where we have higher concentrations of multifamily development, much of that being within certain areas of the city of Tampa. From 2011 to 2017, we identified sort of the hotspots for residential building permits, and you can see there are major clusters around downtown, west shore, and then the Brandon area. For non-residential development during that same timeframe, west shore, downtown, and the airport area pop up as hotspots. And then in terms of employment growth, you can see from 2010 to 2015, we had a 16% increase in employment, and then the map shows areas, the number of jobs per acre, so the darker the color, the higher the concentration of jobs. So all of this data is used to inform where we might be heading in terms of future growth. We took a look at the scenario of what would happen if we continued to develop the way we have now. It would cause us to need to look at outwardly expanding into the rural areas of the county. There would continue to be some market-driven redevelopment, but in this scenario, it wouldn't necessarily be an intensification that would support some of the other goals of the city's comprehensive plan, like transit-oriented development.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've got just a few concerns. We have the Planning Commission here, it was an add-on, and she's giving a lot of good information. We've got three other councilmen that are missing, who are really in debt with land use and development and transportation. And I don't want her to just be up here talking, and then we've got three councilmen that are missing, and you got the Planning Commission here. So I would ask that we have them come back.
Sure.
That way we have a full council, so they can hear in depth what's going on. Mr. Ren has to leave. We'll put you first on these.
Okay. I'm happy to do that.
Three people missing, and I know they're going to have questions, and it's a lot of information.
Sure.
And I know you've waited here, and, you know, but just to be fair to everyone, so they get it equally.
Mr. Chairman, what do we have that we can get them on?
Can we make a motion for a CRA? Or it has to be?
It has to be council.
Well, depends when you want to do it. This is in anticipation of your March 25th joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. So you want to do it before March 25th, obviously, because it'll be relevant.
Right.
Your March calendars, your March 5th calendar has nine staff reports, your March 19th calendar has eight staff reports, your March work session really has to be rescheduled. We'll take that up at the end, because you have that two-hour, and that's after the date anyway, the March 26th.
Why don't you do it on March 5th? Is it on March 5th?
Well, that's true. What you could do is if you want to do it for a time certain of 1:30, or either way, you're going to go into the afternoon on March 5th if you said anything. As it is right now, you're probably going to go into the afternoon on March 5th. So irrespective of what you do, with nine staff reports, and whatever hearings and second reads are going to be coming back. So your call as to when you want to set it, if you want to make it at a time certain, and stop the meeting at the time certain, to be able to take those on.
And I apologize, and I wanted to apologize for coming late. I know, exactly. I was at my law office, and I was entrenched in drafting a pleading, and I look up and it's 1:30, and I went, oh my gosh, and I ran over here, so my apologies. We're talking about, what, moving this item to March 5th?
You have, well, now that you're here, the concern from Councilmember Goode's was you still have two councilmembers interested.
Well, if he stays, but Mr. Ren is leaving, I've got to get out at about 2:30, so.
Yeah, let's reschedule.
I just rescheduled.
Yeah, let's reset.
The question is when. What you can do is you can schedule this, if you like, for, let's say, you have a CRA set for the 12th, and you have a night meeting of presently eight hearings, you could do it after the CRA, let's say, I don't know how long your CRA will take, but they've been taking longer. You could set it for 1:30 in the afternoon on the 12th, you could set it for 1:30 time certain on March 5th, or you could set it for whatever time you want to, just on my direct.
And if I may inquire, we're looking to move it, why, because members have to leave now?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I'm, okay, well, how about, what's good for you guys? What is the last date that we can do this?
You could, on a regular calendar, you could do this on the 19th in the afternoon, if you wish, which is a Tuesday. You have eight staff reports, and two review hearings, and second readings.
Chairman, if I may ask a question of the chair. Which is a meeting that we do not have a night meeting?
The 5th.
The 19th, or the 5th.
No night meetings, or either one.
That's correct.
Or either one would be all right with us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm out of town on the 19th, so my preference would be the 5th.
Okay, let's do the 5th.
Can we make a motion to reschedule this for the 5th at 1:30? Time certain, 1:30?
And before we do that, is, Mr. Shelby, is there a concern on the 5th that we have too many items?
The concern at 1:30 is you may not have gotten through all your second reads and/or staff reports by lunchtime, and then when you come back at 1:30, you'd have to take up this item.
Okay.
If you're doing it at a time certain.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes, and if we need people to remove staff reports for other days, then we'll look at that when the time comes.
And that's a good suggestion, sir. The other point is that council, considering you're, and Councilmember Dingfeld is the only one who's missing, but it's just a concern that if you do want a full council, you're going to have to make sure that you don't have any other conflicts with you at 1:30 in the afternoon on the 5th.
Okay, we have a motion, I'm sorry, who made that? And seconded by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We thank you for your work and patience. Okay, okay, information reports and motions, Councilman.
If I may, because I'm about to leave.
Yes, of course.
There's three combinations, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we present a combination to the Water Department, recognizing April as a water conservation month. The combination will be presented to regular council meeting on March the 19th.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And two more individuals are departing the city, the two people that have done yeoman's work and good work. I'd like to make a motion to present a combination to Sharon Fox, Tax Relating Coordinator, who will be retiring in March after 37 years of service. The combination will not be made at the council.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the next one is, I'd like to make a motion to make a combination, a presentation to Teresa Rogers, Disability Specialist, who will be retiring in March after nearly 35 years of service. The combination, again, will not be made at council.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir? Yes, sir, thank you, Councilman Miranda, we appreciate it. Councilman Carlson, anything, sir?
Yes, on March 5th, we have an item to ask staff, in particular, Carol Post, to talk about the ROI of the EDC. I just had lunch with her, and it's not fair to put that in front of her right now, because she's just started, and so I'd like to remove that from the agenda and just indefinitely postpone it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, there's, I met with Ms. Zornita yesterday in the Planning Commission. There's a whole bunch of ideas that they have that I think we should come back at some point and have 10-minute presentations on, just so we could all look and discuss some of the issues together. But in particular, I'd like to make a motion that we have the Planning Commission staff present a 10-minute presentation to us on their updated poverty analysis for Tampa and Hillsborough County.
And I'm sorry, when was that date?
I didn't pick a date yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have a preference?
What do you, sorry, Marty, is there a date that we can put on?
A question for you, do you have a calendar in front of you?
Yeah.
I'd like to direct your attention to the 18th of June, and if you look at the 18th of June, you have a workshop with the Planning Commission coming in to appear.
Yeah, this is a separate.
To discuss ways of how to plan for growth.
Yeah, this is a separate thing. This is a poverty analysis.
Okay, this is for poverty analysis.
So when's the time we can do a 10-minute staff report?
A 10-minute staff report? The next?
April 16th?
April 16th, yes, you only have three staff reports on April 16th.
Do we have a second?
We already have that day, I'm sorry, I'm professional. We have that day in April 16th already, a 10-minute presentation by Southern Alliance for Clean Energy and Solar Energy Loan Fund.
How about May 7th? No, May 14th? No, May 21st?
Looks good, May 21st. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey, one last thing.
Question, then, this is the Planning Commission, is that correct?
This is, this is a staff member of the Planning Commission who will be giving an update on their poverty analysis.
And you wanted it under staff reports?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then, one last thing, remember, last year, I think it was May 1st, on our first day that we voted for chair and officers? I am getting an award or recognition at an international conference in London on May 7th, and so I won't be here on May 7th, and if that's the day that we were going to have the election, I would request that we, that council give me permission to either call in, or that we have the election on a different day.
How do we do that, Mr. Shelby?
If, now, what was it you said?
Either call in or hold it on a different day.
Or hold it on a different day. Well, let me give you the issue. If council wishes to grant remote participation, all it takes is a vote by council prior to participation. If council wishes to, um, uh, grant remote participation, all it takes is a vote by council prior to participation, that a member, uh, may, um, make, uh, that request and phone in at that time.
Would you rather, would you rather do it by phone or on a different day?
You have, you, the charter says that you have to have.
Right, I was gonna remind you all the charter does. I think designate a specific date that you have to have.
I don't believe that's a charter provision. I believe that's a council provision.
Is it?
Yes, let me just double-check. I know that your organizational meeting must take place immediately after the council is sworn in, um, on an election year.
I think we may have made some changes to that provision.
Let me just see.
Just check.
Um.
I may be wrong, but that's my recollection, so.
I remember. We were on the Charter Review Commission together, but I can't remember.
We made some changes to that.
We changed it because the, because the state made it, made us change the, uh, the notice period.
But I don't know whether we made changes for every year thereafter or not, so that's, that's the question I have.
Can we hold that, and I'll get that answered?
Okay.
If, if I can do it remotely, I mean.
If you, if, if the choice is, if the choice is to do it remotely, that's, that's, can be done that day.
Yeah, easily, then we don't have to even worry about it.
All right, can we just, I'd like to make, do I make a motion?
It's just a request of council to, to, to appear remotely.
Hereby gladly granted. There you go. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, seconded by Councilman, uh, Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, and said motion will include that we will, in case if there's any electronic snafus, God forbid, that we will not take the vote without Councilman Carlson.
Five hours.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah, you call in at eight AM, and we're not here.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sir?
I'll interview you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Uh, real quick, uh, the Tampa Bay Times, or, or, uh, a news source put out an article yesterday about the Times, um, full-time employees getting their, uh, their salaries cut a certain percentage for the next few months or so, or a few paychecks. And, uh, I would encourage everyone that has not subscribed to the digital service for the Times, please do so. It's cheap, it's just a couple of dollars a month, but you're helping, you're supporting local journalism, um, you know, our newspaper for this city, and I would encourage everyone watching at home, uh, anyone who has not done so to, uh, to subscribe and go online and show their support. And that's it.
And, and I want to second that, if I may, it's, um, it, it, local journalism is important for many issues, not just to know about the news, but to hold us all accountable. Um, that's, that's just so important. So, um, so I second that. Anything else, sir? Nothing. Oh, I got, if I may, very quickly, just three items. I moved it on May twenty-first. Um, a representative from the, uh, Gold Star Families come to speak about Memorial Day.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera, with a second from Councilman Goode.
May, May twenty-first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next.
Thank you very much. Uh, also, I motion for the admin, oh, strike that. I motion for a staff report only, not an appearance on, let's say, May, what are we, May seventh, uh, from Tampa Fire Rescue and the administration on potential design plans, uh, in the coming years, obviously not requesting it in this year's budget or anything of that nature, just for the feasibility of another fire station for the North Tampa area to help them lessen the load, uh, in that area. I, I, I didn't go through the statistics. Last week, we were able to get net a, um, a twenty-four-hour daily unit for Station Thirteen, which was a, a huge win, uh, for citizens here, and, and my hat is off, as always, to the administration for putting public safety first. Um, but, you know, you, you take a look at the area, and I'm certainly not a, a public safety specialist, that's for darn sure. Um, but when you take a look at the areas that this station covers, it's, uh, it's very, very vast, and I would just like to see the feasibility of that, the potential of that, the benefit of that, et cetera, uh, so I hereby motion for that.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera, with a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then lastly, if I may, I'm going to request, uh, a legal, uh, study the following, the present legal status of the encouragement of Florida-certified apprenticeships, apprenticeships in our City of Tampa contracts, and what steps the City of Tampa can take to encourage the use by our contractors of Florida-certified apprenticeships in our contracting process for contracts worth over one million dollars. I do this because, uh, in our contracting process, there are cer, certain things that can be done to encourage upward mobility for families. This is certainly one of them. I'm very well aware of the fact that our friends in St. Petersburg are being, uh, there is a, a civil action regarding, uh, uh, something with regards to apprenticeships. To, to that extent, I've been meeting with, uh, my friend, uh, who is a school board member, as well as the head of Associated Builders and Contractors, Mr. Steve Kona, who, whose organization is pursuing that, and working also with numerous unions, so that we have dialogue before, so that we do not meet the same fate, because that's the last thing that we want.
Second.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilman Goode.
And I'm sorry, sixty days. Um, and that would be, what are we in?
That would be April.
So let's do May seventh.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilmember Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, yes, sir?
I did forget something. I thought it was in here, but she didn't bring it out. Uh, there's a longtime pioneer who passed away, uh, Mr. Eddie Smith Jr. in Rogers Park, nineteen fifty-two, first African-American, be the caddy out there. He's been a catalyst out there for, for decades nationally regarding our Rogers Park. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and post humbly, get a combination from City Council for him and his family to be given to him in his services this weekend.
We have a motion made, Councilman Goode, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion by Councilman Maniscalco says, seconded by, I'll keep it to you, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir?
And now, uh, something of extreme importance that I'd like to bring to your attention. You have the calendars in front of you. On February sixth, council made a motion, uh, to, uh, um, at the administration's request. They gave you several options. Council chose option two for a two-hour presentation, um, in each of four workshops at a time certain of ten AM on March, April, May, and June. What that requires of council, particularly for the March and April workshop dates, is to reschedule those items, either as a report only, receive and file a report, or as a staff report, or perhaps at one-thirty in the afternoon. I'm not asking council to take action today, but this is something that needs to be done, because I believe it's council's intention that wherever they are at ten o'clock, they will stop what they're doing or be complete necessarily, and then work till noon to allow the administration their full two hours. So I am asking council, for housekeeping purposes, to add to next week's agenda. I know it's a one-week motion. I apologize to the clerk, but, uh, or we could just do it as an add-on under housekeeping. Either way, to be able to clean up the, particularly the March and the April, um, workshops. Um, and I ask that to be done under unfinished business at the end of next week's meeting.
Okay, yes, so, so what you're essentially asking us to do then, Mr. Shelby, is for individuals who have requested workshops on these, uh, two dates, to look at them and see what can be converted to?
A sta, either a, either a, either a receive and file, either a report only, or a staff report, or anything after, let's say, in July, August, September, a workshop, if you require a workshop.
So take a look at that, everybody, and if there's something that we can move, let's move it.
And of course, you do have the option on workshop. You do ha, and also, you do have the option, if you wanna come back at one-thirty, to move those to the one-thirty and after time, but that's a council option as well.
Anything else, council members? Okay, and, and we, we're this evening at what?
Six. Six o'clock.
Six.
Now, so, so, so I guess I didn't ask for a motion to be made unless the clerk, would you require a motion? That it show up on the agenda to have that discussion, so we discuss it next week?
Yeah, let's, that, that's a good, uh, thing there for a, a reminder, um, you wanna make that motion, councilman, that we deal with that issue, uh, next week, is that the scheduling of the workshops?
Reschedule, reschedule the workshop, uh, for, uh.
But no, that, that, I'm sorry. Uh, do you wanna make a motion that, uh, next week at the end of our items, we discuss, reschedule the workshops?
Make a motion that, that next week's council meeting, we discuss and rework the dates for the, uh, city administration.
Yes, sir. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay, seconded by, we have a motion by Councilman Goode, seconded, I believe it was, first by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, receiving files been done. We are adjourned until six.
Gina wanted me to mention.